All right, Mr. President. Next on the agenda, we have a public hearing on Resolution Number 45-2022. This is to amend the fiscal year 2022 capital budget and fiscal year 2022 capital improvement plan to approve additional funding for the construction costs of the new public safety building for the Wacomico Sheriff's Office in the amount of $7, 715,000. And we have Sheriff Mike Lewis here and our Director of Finance Pam Olin, Purchasing Agent Nick Rice, and Mr. Peyton Matthews, our General Services Supervisor.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. At this time, we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution Number 45-2022. If you have any comments you'd like to make in reference to this specific resolution, come to the podium, please, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution Number 45-2022. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution Number 45-2022.
Second.
Second. Motion, second discussion. Gentlemen, lady, good evening.
Good evening.
I will let whoever wants to start to begin. Sheriff, would that be you?
If I could, sir.
Certainly, thank you.
Mr. President, distinguished members of the council, it actually pains me to have to come here tonight, quite honestly, and ask for what I'm about to ask for. As you well know, about seven years ago, we were tasked with, under our capital improvement program, with some strategic planning for a new public safety complex. And about five years ago, under former county executive Bob Culver, we started meeting with architects and engineers to bring this project to fruition. And approximately two years ago, when we met with members of the county council, we had a figure that we were working with in terms of the total construction cost and completion cost of a new public safety building for the Y Comico County Sheriff's Office. Since then, as you well know, we have endured a two-year pandemic. We've endured the largest rate of inflation in 42 years. We have seen a 185% increase alone in the cost of diesel fuel. We've seen a 113% increase in the cost of steel that will be used in the construction of the new public safety complex. We have seen a 101% increase in the cost of lumber and plywood. We've seen a 50% increase in the cost of copper, a 37% increase in the cost of plastic construction products, and a 29% increase in the cost of gypsum products. That says nothing about the increase in HVAC and electrical products, obviously, and materials that be used in the construction of this building. Consequently, we sent everything out for bid for this new project. The lowest bid came in way over our projected cost, and we knew that we had done absolutely nothing in the last two years in terms of changing anything since we had last met with everyone here at the council. What we are going to need to move forward, once the bids came back, we now have 100% of the construction cost. The lowest bid would mean we're going to need an additional $7.7 million to get this building underway. And we have been told by those that we've been working with, every day we wait, as you can imagine, this figure is going to steadily climb. So that's why we are here requesting the additional $7.7 billion that we sent in a memo to the men and women of the county council. The actual price is $7, 715,000 for this capital improvement project. And I'll defer to Pam Olin, and/or Peyton Matthews, or Nick Rice. Whoever wants to go next.
The $7.7 million would be coming from two sources. As council is aware, we have a significant general fund, fund balance that is available for usage. And additionally, there is American Rescue dollars that can be, these funds can come out of the lost revenue section of the American Rescue. It does not meet any qualifications of a specific definition of American Rescue, so it can't come out of any of the specific line items. But per the federal law, up to $10 million can just be carved aside and said, you're spending it on costs of your government due to lost revenue, and you do not have to prove that you lost revenue up to the $10 million. And that is across the board, across the country. So we have used that $10 million number for $960,000 for the, giving the $80,000 to each of the volunteer companies. And so the remainder of the $10 million is available to us, and that's why we are recommending we split it between American Rescue and our fund balance. It would have no debt impact, and it would have the ability for us to, when the, if this legislation passes, then we can immediately then make the change to the budget, and we can encumber the funds for the project.
All right, thank you. Any questions from council? Did I entertain a motion to approve?
Yes.
Thank you.
When did the bids go out?
Bids went out on February 1st of this year.
Okay, when you came to us with a total cost two years ago, why didn't the bids go out then? Why was it two years from there?
We were only at a 50% design when we first got the first cost estimate back. So the bid documents were not ready at that point.
The project did not change in scope or size, but they had to continue creating the bid documents, and that took additional time, from the time that we met with council previously.
So when we met with you guys two years ago, that was the first we have got, we had gotten an actual cost estimate based on the design being 50% completed.
And since then, it has...
I don't understand. What do you mean 50% completed?
How can you get a total cost of a building if it's only 50% completed, designed?
That was the 50, that was based on the construction estimate of the design of the building.
50% built?
In other words, if you're building a house, and your builder says, okay, it's going to cost you this much initially, that this is what we think your house is going to cost. And from the time he tells you that, until you sign the contract, you've decided that maybe you want these other things. And that's, I'm just giving you a comparison here. We didn't decide we wanted anything extra. The architects provide the 50% cost estimate to give us a track record to determine our funding.
So he gave you a 50% cost estimate at $32 million?
No, it was $28 million at the 50%.
So that was 50% cost of the building?
No.
So you keep saying 50%...
The design documents were 50% complete, not the, not 50% of the building.
So 50% completed design documents, he was able to tell you that the cost of the building was $32 million?
Yes.
20, 20, 28 million. Projected cost, yes, projected cost of 28.
How come we've never witnessed that in any, in any of the school projects that we've bid, bid on and voted on before?
What do you mean witness?
How is this, this seems like a whole different process of what you're talking about, this 50%. I mean, we have school projects that come before us all the time. They come, they tell us, this is the cost of the school. We approve it, we bond it, it's built. I don't understand how...
So what we're, so what we're saying, had the inflation numbers not going up, which is what we provided today...
We're wondering why we didn't break ground maybe, maybe a year ago.
The, the design documents weren't 100% completed until October of last year.
So why did you come to us saying you want, it was going to cost 28 million? What he's saying is...
That was two years ago.
What he's saying is, you shouldn't have came to us with that, until the complete document.
The advantage to, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The advantage to coming to you is that we were able, with the $28 million, if we did not come to you at that point in time, we would not have been able to bond anything. Because there is such a lead time for bonding. We put in our CIP in the fall of 2020, just make sure I've got my dates right here. The fall of 2020, we put in our CIP for our '22 capital budget. When we did our 20, so fall of 2020, we're creating our CIP. We come to council with that CIP. We have to have an estimate to do that. Then, when we're going to bond market, we have basically a six-month process to go to bond market. And so that started last summer, in the summer of '21, to be able to go to the bond market, when we went in December of '21. So if we don't have an estimate 18 months in advance, we can never borrow anything for this project, because we would be sitting here today and saying, okay, here's the dollar amount we've gotten a bid, but now we have at least, we've got the process of amending for the full amount. We'd have to go through the whole bond market process, which is a six-month, and nobody's going to hold their bids for six months. So we have to work with estimates. Since the point in time we got our first estimate, that's 18 months ago, there has been inflation, significant inflation over specific sectors that impact this building. And thus, we are coming to you to say, here is how we can get the building under contract and lock in the price at this dollar amount.
Mr. Cannon, to address your concern, if I'm not mistaken, the Board of Education has their own design team, and when they come to you, they've already seen the numbers that we're seeing as the design team for this building. In other words, when the school board comes to you and says, we need $32 million, they've already been through the 50, the 90, the 100% cost estimate.
Correct.
And done, and done their due diligence. You're involved in this because we're the design team. We, we don't have the ability to say, okay, here's your total package, because we're not qualified for that, so to speak. We depend on our architect to provide us the information to come to you and say, here's where we are. And you guys have been involved in each step along the way, rather than just saying, okay, well, we got the estimate back in, in October, it was $28 million. Now, six months later, because of inflation, we're at $32 million, or $33 million, whatever the number is. I think that's the disconnect between us and the Board of Education.
Well, I think it's just noteworthy to point out, we, I mean, I know we have a past situation, I guess, with a former county executive, but for clarity, we, I mean, this body started hearing originally that this facility would be around, what, the $16 million range? And then, and then it came back, I know there's a lot of consternation among this body to be able to say, oh, to raise it up to 28 million. Now, what's the total cost of this?
So the contract amount is...
33.3 million.
33.3.
That was the low bid.
That was the low bid. The range of bids was 33.3 to like $37 million from highly qualified individuals, or not individuals, companies, to provide this building to the county. And as such, we believe that the company that we would like to award this to is a responsible and responsive bidder, and can complete the project at the amount that we are suggesting. Again, you always put a contingency on amount, and that's why the amount we're asking for is $7.7 million. But since we gave, since we got an estimate in 2020, just the cost of construction bids from October 2020 to now is about 18% growth, counting all those different things that we have, that we have in this building. And 18% on 28 million brings you pretty darn close to the $33 million number that we're asking for.
Can I ask you how many bids we've received?
Five.
Five.
Yes, ranging from 33.3 to 37.
All right. So this 33, is that including the nearly 8 million you're asking for us today, or is 8 million on top of the 33?
So the 33 gets us to the ability to contract for the 3, the $7.7 million gets us the ability to contract the 33, gets us the ability to contract a construction manager, gets us the ability to have a contingency amount. And thus, we can get this under contract and get it started.
So it sounds like this 7.7 is going to be in addition to the 33?
No, no, no.
It's not going to be?
Not at all.
Okay.
That, that includes the 33.
Right. And it does give me heartburn, but I know the inflation in the, in the cost, I've been in the, I've been in the Home Depot, and I see what a tuba floor costs, I've seen what a sheet of plywood costs and metal, yes, it's, it's gone up significantly in the last two years.
But like we said, it's important to state that the scope has not changed, that we're strictly just seeing this 18% across the board in construction contracts in inflation.
Right.
That would also cover the $278,000 in city fees that have not been waived yet.
So you said yet, does that mean they may be?
I mean, we can try, that's not...
We can try, but it's not happened yet.
Uh huh.
Just to come back to your comment about, you've said this a couple of times, about the scope and size has not changed.
Correct.
And, you know, two years ago, we brought that up. You know, that was a concern I had, you know, because, I mean, because the, well, the whole council had a little bit of a jaw-dropping moment when it went to the 28. And, you know, I know myself, but others also had recommended some, you know, them to go back and look at some changes that could be made. And frankly, they came back at the same exact thing. Nothing got changed.
Well, we did look at...
I mean, I'm not, I'm not, yeah, I'm not, that's not your issue. I mean, the architects came, you know, but came back just with the same, you know, this is a big project. I mean, 100%, we need a new public safety building. You know, I mean, I'm not, you know, denying that in any way, shape, or form, but a lot of projects, when you get cost escalations like this, yeah, you change the scope of the project. You know, there's always, you know, and once again, I'm not directing this at you, but you know, but, you know, that has never occurred anywhere in this, you know, we're now...
So again, the, the, the needs for the public safety building to meet federal, state requirements for a public safety building, for the safety of a building in hurricane, and additionally, to meet requirements for what needs to be stored and how it needs to be stored. Ultimately, if we started cutting those things, we would ultimately have to add them, and then they would be more costly than trying to do it in the first place.
And it is important...
I'd debate that. It sounds good, but I'd debate that.
But it's also important to note that this building is projected to have over a 50-year lifespan, too. So that, we are looking at, like I said, the feasibility study that was done, we tasked the architects and the engineers to, you know, get the sheriff's office what they needed and to make this project work. And like we said...
And I 100% get that. I mean, it's got to meet the, you know, the requirements, and I get all that, you know, it's got to have the quality, et cetera. But just from size, overall size, to size of, you know, storage, et cetera, to size of garage, and there were things we had concerns about, to fenestration of the building, you know, a lot of those things could have been addressed in some shape or form and meet all those requirements. No changes were ever made in the scope.
Because we're looking at the long-term use of the building, the sheriff's department growing, the potential for the 911 center to move over there.
That's additional building?
Yes.
So that didn't have nothing to do with this?
Agreed. But there are things designed into this build, excuse me, designed into this building that will allow that to seamlessly happen.
So if we agreed to this 33 million, and you go get your contract signed, and these commodities continue to increase, what's going to happen?
That's why we would be under contract, and that's the urgency today, is to get under contract.
To lock this price in.
The vendor's, the vendor's pricing is held for 60 days from the moment that we open bids.
So if the prices continue to escalate, the builder's going to have to eat the cost?
Correct.
That's the importance of locking in now.
Yeah, but Nick, you just said 60 days. I mean, you won't even hardly break ground.
No, no, 60 days until the contract is signed.
So is there any, any, anything in the contract that allows for cost ex, escalation of materials? Is, when you sign that contract, say you signed it tomorrow?
Correct.
Is that going to be the price? Or are they going to, or is a contractor able to come back to you and say, hey, wiring's going up, or wallboard's tore up?
No, the, as a government entity, we require the contractor to hold their pricing. Now, if unforeseen circumstances arise that are outside of the contractor's scope, then that would be what we consider a change order. But increase in prices is not...
For example, when we built the Northeast Collector Road, and they started digging for that...
I remember that, yes.
You, we found stuff. And that, and so that is the kind of thing that is not anticipated in this contract, but there is a contingency that we're building into the number we've come to you for, to hopefully preclude us coming to you for the building.
I understand that. I'm asked, the question I ask is, if the material goes, increases in price, is the contractor locked in to still providing that material at that price?
Yes.
And the materials as, as bid out and at the quality that they were bid out at?
The general contractor will require his subcontractors to hold their price for 60 days as well, generally, which means if, if you gave me a price of $100 for this table for 60 days, and I come back to you within the 60 days, this table's still $100. If I come back to you in 62 days, you can charge me 150, or we rebid the job. We rebid the work. But once the contract is signed, the builder is responsible for holding his costs. Yes.
How long?
The life of the contract.
The life of the project.
Okay, correct. Okay.
So this funding will allow you to sign the contract?
Yes.
And lock in at this price.
And so you're locking in at this price, so we don't expect to see you come back in a year or two saying you need more money?
Not to build the building.
So I guess maybe an assurance we're looking for is, if we approve this tonight, when will we begin breaking ground?
It would be up to the contractor.
Six months?
I wouldn't think it would be much more than two to three, depending on their availability.
Okay, okay.
You know, the site work, the site work would start, I would say, within two months if, if their site contractor is, is ready to go.
Good, okay.
And just to circle back, because you mentioned this earlier, I mean...
Circle back.
The one good thing, I mean, you made the comment, you know, I mean, you know, this isn't, we're not doing any additional debt to do this.
Correct.
But when you were here last time, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but the question was asked, what does this do to our debt capacity? And I believe your statement said in three years, we'd be at our maximum.
So this specific amendment does not do anything to our...
I know, I'm not talking about this amendment, like I said, I realize we're not adding, I'm talking about, when we were at 28 million, that question was asked, and your comment was, when we were at 20, that in three years, we'd be at maximum debt capacity.
So we have, we are refining that estimate. When we came to you two years ago, we were not anticipating the growth that we have experienced in our income tax revenue, and in some of the other revenues, the retardation tax and a couple other things. So I don't have a finalized number. Yes, we still have to watch our debt going forward. But I don't believe three years is the period of time at this point in time because of the fact that we have had an increase in revenue in other line items that we weren't anticipating. So that grows the base, that it grows the ability to borrow, and it also grows the revenue to pay that debt.
I guess that would beg to ask whether or not we, whether or not the 3.857 million coming from the, coming from the American Rescue plan is sufficient, or whether it should be more than that, whether we should look at taking more from that.
So are, there is that. We have in the budget funding for, and I'd have to pull my budget document, but I want to say it's about 3 million, over $3 million in that as well. Primarily, that is not coming from the $10 million. It's coming from specific categories that are allowed under American Rescue. But we, we're balancing the federal government's desire to have us spend the American Rescue, but we're also balancing the, the surplus that we have in our fund balance and using it towards capital projects, which are one-time expenditures versus putting them in as operating costs, which then become a continual drain.
Any other discussion?
I was just going to add, I mean, President Cannon took my comment there. If we can go higher than the 3.57, you know, with federal dollars, that'd be great to do so. I, of course, say I trust your accounting work and your magical, you know, capital work here, but, you know, and I'll, but I'd also go back and say that, you know, as a whole, we don't, I think everybody here in this entire room doesn't want to see this go up again. And, you know, we still have a lot of needs. I think that's the one thing I'm worried about, is, I guess, looking forward, is capital needs, you know, we, on, in this floor alone of this building, we don't even have ACA, you know, if you're handicapped, you can't even go to the bathroom on this floor. You have to go take an elevator elsewhere. You know, we have real needs that I think going forward, as long, I trust you all, and I trust the process there, but as long as you feel comfortable, but I just want to make sure that we don't get too close to our debt ceiling and that we're still looking forward with our, you know, to make sure that we...
So this is my recommendation to the council, is that we split this for a couple reasons. Again, American Rescue dollars have the ability to be spent on some specific items, as well as some non-specific items. We have the ability to, and so we're, we're, it is a balancing act. Ultimately, we could shift it one way or the other, but again, it seemed cleanness, it's a very set number to split it in half, and there are reasons to take it from both at this point in time.
Any other discussion, any other questions? All those in favor of Resolution 45-2022, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, resolution passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Since I am mentioning that Public Works did stick around, does council have the appetite to try to cover Public Works this evening?
Yes, yes. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If anyone has any public comments in general, come to the podium, please, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns.
You.
That concludes public comments, council comments. Entertained a motion adjourned to go into open work session.
So move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Who's my second?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is the fiscal year '23 budget session with the Department of Public Works at Solid Waste, Roads, and Engineering. Thank you all for sticking it out. Good evening.
You say you'd take me to Sizzler if I hung around, so...
Sizzler closed at 6 o'clock.
And he got a Sizzler, man. He set you up. There's a little Sizzler around here.
He got me.
All right. We'll let you, yes?
So honestly, it's your work, it's your work session. If you had specific questions that you wanted answered, I, I believe there were some questions that Levin has passed along answers to, so was there anything else based on that information that council would like answered?
Any questions from council?
Levin, you were good with the answers to your questions.
Any questions from anyone here?
Looking at roads.
Hello?
Roads?
Roads. Any category whatsoever is...
Public Works, roads, or solid waste?
How many miles of roads are we going to pave this...
Upcoming fiscal year or the current? Upcoming. Generally, generally for the two and a half million...
In the new budget?
Generally, for the two and a half million, we're usually looking at paving somewhere around 18 miles of road and chip sealing, somewhere between 55 and 62, depending on which section we're in. And then it could be 12 to 15 miles of slurry seal.
Was there any, let's see, 22, 22?
How many, what was that again? How many...
Usually, usually with the 2.5, with 2.8, this year was $2.8 million we ended up for, for hot mix asphalt, and I think that we're going to pave about 18 miles out of that. And then with our chip seal, which usually we dedicate about a million dollars to, it's split up through the county, it's about a million dollars a year for chip seal, we get, depending on which section, it's 55 to 62 miles, something like that.
It's more miles than I thought.
And then with, and then usually, if, this, this current fiscal year, and then looking forward to next fiscal year, we have candidates for slurry seal, secondary, especially secondary rural roads, or roads that have been paved six to eight years ago, so we'll probably have somewhere around 15 miles or so for slurry seal. So we'll probably have somewhere around 15 miles or so for slurry seal.
I know in the scheme of things, it looks like it was cut like 400,000 or whatever.
No, I don't-
Blacktop.
No, so what happens is, is we put placeholder numbers in. So we put in a million for slurry, a million for chip seal, and a million for hot mix, or two and a half million for hot mix. So then what we usually do is our slurries here in recent years hasn't been a million. So whatever our needs are for slurry, the balance of it goes to hot mix, the same with chip seal, depending on which it is. So like I said, this year, I think our bid price for hot mix was 2.825 million or something like that. So if you're seeing a reduction, that's just because that's what, you know, I mean, next year, it very well could be $3 million if we don't use that much for slurry seal.
So if you go back to the column that says original budget, the numbers on original budget are the same in '22 as what they're requesting in '23. It was a matter of doing a budget transfer between a couple lines based on the contract.
Okay. Well, I guess the next question is, the condition of some of our rural roads being what they are, was there any, um, discussion about increasing that, um, blacktop budget? Say to 3 million, three and a half million? I mean, you know, we still get, we still get complaints, you know, about even, I know you're doing what you can do with what you have. I understand that.
Well, we, we've, we've actually, I would say, converted more roads from tar and chip to hot mix in the last, uh, eight years than we have in the previous 15 before that.
Well, I understand that. I see that.
So we are, you know, we are doing that, but that's, you know, it's a different animal to, to convert tar and chip roads versus milling and repaving hot mixture.
But we still have a lot of roads that-
Oh, I agree, yeah.
That, that need more attention and, um-
Now, keeping in mind-
And it doesn't seem to be, you know, we're increasing a lot of other things. I mean, I think the citizens in the rural counties, rural part of this county deserve as good a roads as some of the other parts of the county.
We've been trying to target about a half a million dollars a year at least to, to improving rural roads, tar and chip roads.
Does it-
That's pretty close to what it is.
On that note, does that include, I know this past legislative session, potentially one of the biggest wins that no one seems to be talking about, but, uh, you know, um, our own delegate and then it was actually got through the highway user revenue, uh, up, uh, increased, uh, amounts. You know, that's pretty substantial. I, I, that was a pretty big win for most counties, I think for Mako and others. How, do we know how much, is that, does this budget reflect that, uh, those potential increased revenues?
Yes. The revenue went up to $3.8 million.
I was going to ask the same question.
Up to what?
$3.8 million.
It went up to that. Well, when they cut that off back, was it '07, '08? It was seven million.
It was in '09, and we were, our budget was around $10 million at the time.
Yeah, okay.
So it went up to, it went up to 3.8, and that's per the legislation, and that's the number that I, uh, have, we have loaded into this budget.
You know, I, I read somewhere in some news account that our money was restored. Well, it wasn't restored, it was part of it.
The municipalities were, were restored to a higher level than, say, the counties were.
Right, well, we didn't get anywhere near what we were getting, so anyway.
So that 3.8 million is in here?
So the 3.8 million is in the revenue section of the budget. If you go to the highway user line item in the revenue, you will see that that number is at $3.8 million.
It's not reflected on this page?
So, no, because this is the expense side of the budget, not the revenue side.
Any other questions? You had a difference-
I'm just relating what I hear from the citizens out here who's paying the bills.
Um, I thank Mr. Holloway for advocating for our county roads. They are very important.
And keeping in mind too, and I always wanted to express this, when we look at rehabbing a road, which is blacktoping a road just previously, a tar and chip road, where, when we, when we go into that process, it's, it's a replacement of, total replacement of crossroad pipes underneath that blacktop because nobody likes to see blacktop cut once it's laid down. So normally, in our normal workflows, we replace the pipes. We have certain things we do in seasons. We're at that million dollar point, we're, we're right around that area of those are the things that we can do. We can replace enough pipe to carry that million dollars worth of blacktop or, or a little bit more. Keeping in mind, to say, uh, Council Hall, Holloway said that if, if we were to get a, an extra million dollars to say that, you would almost look at one-third of that going to pipe replacement from a outside contractor. So you're, you're not getting, getting a million dollars worth of true blacktop money, you're getting-
Part of the road.
Part of the road. Correct, correct.
I tell you what. I don't even want to go here, but-
Mr. Holloway, you have to use your microphone.
Start riding down the southern end of Poplar Neck Road every morning on your way to work, and don't go over 20 mile an hour, okay? I get more complaints about that road from the fire, fire departments, the members. You can't run 20 mile an hour on that road.
Especially right there where that pipe is going-
That's where he's talking about, but that's, that's actually-
And then you got Green Lewis Road, it's just as bad or worse.
Yeah.
You know?
And then you've got the other-
The roads that I hear about.
Unfortunately, those are roads that I usually are in my neighborhood, so I, I do drive those roads.
Well, Poplar Neck will be taken care of when this tax ditch pipe, we do. I mean, that's, that's definitely a horrible section of that road right there, you know? I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm very familiar with the roads. I drive them every day and I know.
Oh, you do. I know you do.
And, uh, I mean, you know, if we could target, if, if, let's just say, you know, and also when you look at what, what tar and chip roads you're going to rehab, you would like to say that you're going to concentrate on the ones, for, for instance, that are considered major collector roads that are still chip sealed. Um, we still have some of those. And, and then you want to say you're going to spend all this money on roads that receive a higher level of traffic than, than some of the other ones do. So, I mean, we do conduct, conduct traffic counts to make sure that what we are going to spend all this money on, um, is, that we need to, you know? So, I, I mean, you're talking about, um, for a, a chip seal road to convert it to hot mix, you're probably close to $180,000 for a mile. And that's, that's probably not reflecting what we're going to be looking at in the upcoming year or two with, uh, with the price of asphalt, because there is an asphalt escalator built into that, into that, it's those contracts. So, you know, it's kind of becomes a moving target when we're seeing inflation like we are. So that's something to consider as well, uh, that we're not going to, you know, conceivably not pave as many miles if, if things keep going in the direction that they're going.
So, Lee-
That's why I suggested we put more money into roads, so we could do as much.
So, so you're telling me if a company bid on a road, that they're going to pave it?
Mm-hmm.
There's an escalator built into it, so if the asphalt going, you guys still have to foot the bill, the cost of the increase of that road?
The, the asphalt escalator is built into any, well, any government paving bid. And, and, and that's only in fairness, because you look at what, you look at what oil's done. And the liquid asphalt is, you know, it's, it's all based on the, the oil index. So there's a formula based on what the oil index is, um, to, to determine what the additional cost per ton would be. And so far, what we've realized this year is we're, is we're at about $3.50 more a ton than what we bid because of that oil escalator. Now, there's a hope that it could go in the other direction and, and it won't, you know, we could actually benefit. But, um, you know, you don't know, we don't know where, where that's going to go. It doesn't affect us on our chip seal or our slurry seal to the same degree, just the hot mix asphalt.
There's always an easy explanation for it. You have a fuel down in solid waste by about 24%.
Yes.
What's-
So, so when we started in the solid waste and we were looking at the budget, um, we hadn't realized the impacts of those fuel costs yet. They, they really, you know, started to spike up. I feel confident in solid waste budget that, uh, for the most part, we can move some money around and we can absorb some of those costs. Most certainly, if gas goes up to $8 a gallon, uh, every department in the county is going to be coming back and asking council for extra money for, for gas.
Your fuel costs, you're estimating going down 24%?
So it, it, it is, um, it's kind of misleading in the way the budget is showing. So they had a budget of $400,000 at the beginning of the fiscal year. They did a budget transfer into that line item. Um, they just took, um, an amount and kind of moved the whole line when they didn't need to move the whole line. Um, so it is, the estimate right now for what fuel is going to be for that department is about the $475 to about $500,000. So even though the budget for fiscal '22 is over $600,000, we don't expect to spend $600,000 in fuel for solid waste.
I bet you will.
Yeah, me.
As of right now, um, they're in the $300,000 range at the end of March. So it would have to really go up by the end of, end of the fiscal year. So again, the run rate and using the run rate, it's looking at the 475, 500 number, um, appears to be appropriate.
We enjoyed four years of, of, of-
Low fuel.
Lower fuel.
Yeah.
And remember, John, when we were sitting here questioning them years ago about why the fuel costs had gone up?
Yeah, yeah. And no kidding, yeah, yeah, I remember that. You have-
Not you.
No, no.
I was gonna say-
Yes, I understand.
I, I put my reputation on it at this point.
Litter crew, $35,000, that's a new line item, I guess, is that, how is that, does that-
So, so, so the litter crews, they're, they're in there, we left them in there. We've lost them and we're hoping to get them back. So we don't want it to, to dissolve that line item in case we can get them back.
The state, the state's already getting prisoners to pick up litter. I mean, is the county not allowing it yet or?
They're not allowing us to use state inmates to pick up litter.
State's using state inmates.
Yes, state is.
Right now, they've still put on hold the, the outside contract.
Thought we used county inmates.
We did, we did. So the, the county inmates-
COVID stopped it for a while, right?
COVID stopped that, correct.
And you're saying now we're going to bring it back and do we, is that part of this?
We're hoping to bring it-
Hoping to bring it.
Hoping to, is that-
We're hoping it will come back.
Is that part of this 35?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
We had an email about that.
So, so in order to use state inmates to pick up county roads, we would have to pay a guard, um, or an officer in that capacity. That rate to us, uh, they gave us an amount on that the other day. We just had a meeting with them and it was, it was astronomical to have that done. So it was on, not feasible, feasible for us to even think about doing that, because it would be terrible. So we're hoping that this, that the county, um, what they have to do is, is get the type of inmate that they can put back on a work release program so that we can get them out. So when the county, even when the county went out, we paid that guards, guard, or that officer's salary. So that was part of that deal. There was an officer with those inmates all the time.
Okay.
The county detention center officers?
Yeah.
You pay that, okay.
So we could afford those, but we can't afford the states.
Um, question. On, uh, Public Works and, um, Waste, you have a need for consultant on both pages. One was like, uh, Public Works looks like it's 254,000?
So in our consultants, a lot of times consulting services, you'll see specialized, a specialized project that they're doing. So right now, we're in the landfill expansion for the, for the, uh, uh, the old, uh, the section across from, from, from on Brick Hill Road. So that's a basically a five-year process, so we're still in that process. We're in phase three of a three-phase process, thank the good Lord. And so you'll see things that are specialized to that, they'll still say consulting, but they're consulting based on a project.
So that would be for Waste?
Yes.
Yeah, and then-
What about Public Works?
Public Works is if we need to hire an outside engineer.
If you do, so you don't know if you do now or not?
In Public Works, in Public Works, so what we're doing currently, all residential stormwater review is done in-house.
Mm-hmm.
The commercial, the bigger commercial stormwater review, we are using consultants such as GMB, um, AWB, or EBF. They're, they're looking over our, our stormwater for commer, for commercial only.
Okay, thank you.
And we use them as well. I mean, just like we were talking about tax ditch pipes, they're going to be replaced and, and you have to go through all the permitting, so we're using outside consulting to design all that, so.
Question I had is, uh, your capital equipment, 1.2 million dollars on the capital equipment in roads?
Roads.
On roads, yeah, what is that?
So what we have over the roads is we have an aging fleet that we have been put off and put off and put off. And, and, you know, what, how old were those trucks that were? 20 years?
Yeah, some are, some are 2002s, some are 89s or, or 90s. There's some old, old trucks out there, like our old GMCs. You can't even get parts for them anymore, the old GMC dump trucks. And we, we, at the time that the county bought them, I think we got like five. So we've got five 2002 GMC dump trucks.
This is, um, defer, these have been deferred purchases. So, um, to make sure our fleet is up to standards and actually operable and on the road, we have, we have in, increased these line items to make those purchases in this fiscal year.
What use those, um, five dump trucks for?
It'd be anything.
Anything, including snow plow?
Oh, yeah, for, no, for sure, but I mean-
Salt trucks.
Yeah, we use, I mean, we use tandem dump trucks and six-wheel dump trucks every day. It just depends on the type of work that we're doing or where they're at. If we're doing on a small street or subdivision streets, we generally use the six-wheelers. I mean, it just really depends on the type of work that we're doing. But, you know, the tandems we like to use because they can certainly haul more material, especially if we have long runs, if we're putting material on dirt roads or something like that, but, you know.
Do you plan on leasing those?
No, we generally, roads, we just do purchases. We don't, we do lease on and pickups and things like that. But most of our equipment, as you can see historically, we keep forever and, you know, we run it forever and-
20 years is a good lifetime.
Yeah, yeah. But the problem with the GMCs is you just can't get any parts for them anymore.
Yeah.
So.
And there's a fund balance contribution, I guess.
So, um, in this fiscal year for the solid waste, solid waste is an enterprise fund, so their budget has to be balanced. And the budget has to be balanced with one of two things. You can eat, well, three things. You could actually have your expenses exactly equal your revenues, which is rare occurrence, or you have to have the balancing entry. So if your expenses are less than your revenues, you actually put a budget line item in that says contributing to fund balance. And that then allows us to make purchases, um, in future years. The-
Sell construction.
You know, sell construction instead of having to borrow it, you, you're able to take it out of your fund balance. Versus, on the converse side, for the last couple years, we have had to budget the opposite where our revenues don't equal our expenses, so we have a usage of fund balance.
Okay.
So, um, all funds have to balance, and so the balancing entry is either a use or a contribution to fund balance.
Solid waste is unbalanced.
This one is solid waste. On the general fund side, you'll see that we use general fund, fund balance to balance out our number.
This is why you've actually seen me come up and, and, and ask for increases. I didn't do it this year, but increases in tipping fees. So to, to the point that we're doing right now, we're doing a $7 million to landfill cell construction. In seven years, or within the life of that span of that, those cells, I should have recouped my $7 million so that I can now move on to the next one. Those two cells realistically are going to last me about three and a half, maybe four years. I will not, I, I, I'm not holding ground, I'm losing ground. And that's why you see me do the things that I do. Because the two things sort of have to match, or I'm going to go broke sooner or later, so.
Uh, the only other thing, uh, is, uh, several different towns or, you know, towns have requested that, uh, when we're doing the roads, whether it's asphalt or slurry seal, that we maybe try to work with them.
I already have. Actually, I spent the day with a lady from Willards, I think, last week. And I met with Sharp Town and went through some things with them. And I put some numbers together for them. And, uh, hopefully when we, hopefully re-up our bid, if they, if they decide to agree to it or we have to rebid it, those, those roads will be on our list, so the contractor will be obligated to do them.
I'd be great. A couple year ago, they did, um, was it Bent Pine Road?
Yeah.
You know, for Willards, they concluded them in the contract. Willards paid for it, you know?
Yeah, yeah. The billings between them, but we do all the technical support. We go out there and look at what they're going to need, help them to that. And then we, just the contractor and the town will get together with the money part of it. But we'll inspect it and make sure that, you know, just like it's one of our-
Was Mardello looking for any type of assistance?
Yes, for a short piece of road in town, yes.
And I say assistance, same as Joe's talking about, where they pay, but they just want to set a deal.
Yeah.
So are we working towards that? I'm, I'm-
Yeah, so, so basically they're piggybacking off of our, our paving contracts.
Your, your, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, we'll look at it, we'll do the, you know, we'll go out and measure it. We'll give them an estimate on what the tonnage is and the milling price and all that, so they have some idea what to budget. And then when it comes time to do the work, our inspectors will actually go out there and be there with them, just like it's one of our roads, you know? So that there's some people, somebody watching.
Sure, yeah, that's, that's great.
Put the billings between them, so.
Sounds like a good deal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any, any other questions?
I'm good.
Bill?
Yep, Bill.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Appreciate you guys. Thank you guys for coming in tonight.
Sticking it out.
That's all right, I'm going to Sizzler.
You going where?
A Sizzler.
Are you inviting us? We're done.
I'll meet you guys there.
We, we can get you there.
See you guys, take it easy.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks.
Good seeing you guys. Entertain motion to adjourn.
So move.
You got it.
Thank you.
All those in favor?